Good evening. It is now 5:15 PM and the Bel Air Board of Town Commissioners Work Session for November 25th is now in session. I'm going to call the roll. Commissioner Chismar.
Here.
Commissioner Taylor.
Here.
And Commissioner Hanley.
Here.
All right, and now may I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Madam Chair, if I may, before you vote, can I ask, beg the Commissioner's indulgence to move, let Laura go first, and then let me do my report second, if she can do her presentation ahead of me?
Sure.
Sure.
So I will move that items four and five be reversed, and I will also move that item six A1 be removed from the agenda.
Thank you.
And do I have a second for that?
I'll second.
Thank you, Commissioner Chismar. Any discussion of that? All right. Mike, we can vote on the amendment?
Thank you, Madam Chair. To, this is for the vote on the amended, on the amendment to the agenda for November 25th, 2025 Commissioners' Work Session. Commissioner Chismar.
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor.
Aye.
Commissioner Hanley.
Aye.
And Chair Edding.
Aye.
The amendment is approved.
And now we need a vote on the agenda as amended.
So this is for the agenda as amended, November 25th, 2025. Commissioner Chismar.
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor.
Aye.
Commissioner Hanley.
Aye.
And Chair Edding.
Aye.
The agenda is approved as amended. Thank you.
Perfect. So first on our agenda now is the presentation by Laura Bianca Pruitt on sustainability.
Good evening. Thank you, Commissioners. So tonight is sort of a preliminary overview of the Sustainable Maryland Certified Program. Basically, kind of go through the different parts of the program, the things that we, a little bit about the program, the things that we as the, as a town do for the program, and potentials for our next application. So to start with a little bit of background, the Sustainable Maryland Municipal Certification Program was designed as a collaborative effort between the Environmental Finance Center at the University of Maryland and the Maryland Municipal League to reward communities for their sustain, their sustainability efforts. And this is-
Laura?
Huh?
Can I, are we gonna do the back screen?
I'm trying to, but the projector isn't coming on, which is very odd.
But you said that Mark is capturing that screen over there, right?
He is, yes.
Okay, I didn't know that.
All right. So, so the process is, it's pretty rigorous, and it's renewed every three years. The town first became certified in 2012, and we were last recertified in 2023, which means that in 2026 is our next recertification. And as part of that, what we, what we'll do is demonstrate the actions that we've taken between 2023 and 2026, and by creating a work plan for the following three years, for 2027 to 2030. And it's a voluntary certification with proposed actions being non-binding, but it provides a blueprint when working with other levels of government, as well as other community and nonprofit organizations, as well as developers. Sustainable Maryland Certified, or SMC as I'll refer to it, provides grant opportunities and other resources for municipalities, including at least one that we'll be applying for in 2026. So at this time, there's two levels of certification. There's a bronze level and a silver level. We earned silver for the first time in 2023 and plan to earn it again in 2026. And so the requirements for the silver certification, there's two mandatory actions that must be completed. Then out of eight priority actions, we have to complete at least four of those. And then out of the 10 action categories, we have to do at least six of those. And it's on a point system. Every action is assigned points, and so we have to earn at least 400 or more points. In 2023, we earned 445, so just a little bit over to make it to silver. The two mandatory actions are to create a Green Team, which our Green Team is our Sustainability Work Group, and which meets at least semi-annually. We generally meet more in the, the three-year increments as they're working on the Green Team Action Plan. So basically, what the Action Plan is, is that they'll choose actions that they hope to accomplish over the next three years, and establish timelines, responsibilities, and so on. Now, not every action has to be taken on by municipal staff. Community organizations can and are suggested to do, and may lead the, some actions. And as part of the Action Plan, we'll release a survey to residents to solicit their thoughts on sustainability in the town. So what we're gonna do is go through, these are the priority actions. We need four, we need four out of eight for the silver certification. In 2023, the ones that are in green are the six that we did complete, and the Complete Streets Policy and Program is a seventh one that we should be able to complete for 2026. Now I'm gonna go through the 10 action item categories. I did a little bit of color coding. Anything that's in green are actions that we did in 2023 and are expected to be able to do again in 2026. Anything in either, in the sort of brown, orangeish-brown color are actions that we should be able to do, we either already have done in this three-year period, or should be able to complete by the deadline of June 30th, 2026. I also have in there, I've listed all the actions. Depending on the slide, some of them are blue, some of them are black, just depends on how the slide came out. By all means, do we not, do we not need to do every action? But figured it was good to at least outline what all the different possibilities and opportunities are. Each action has a different timeline, so some actions, if there's something that you feel really passionate about that you want to do, we could do between now, within the next seven months. Whereas other actions are a lot more in-depth, and could take, are either multi, are multi-step and/or could take years. So it might be something that we would want to start now to work towards for 2029. But figured I would just kind of give a overview of everything. Now each, and now each of you have received the, the write-up of the report that we submitted in 2023. So you could read through on your own time to see what, all of the specific details of everything we did. One other thing to note is that each category has a, an option for an innovative demonstration project. And these are projects that fit the spirit of the category, but may not necessarily fit under a particular item. And some of those we've done, and I'll go through those as well. So our first category is called Community Action. And within each category, some of them have some category, subcategories, others are just, you know, with, under the general category. I thought it was very fitting that this looked like a tree for the Green Team. I already talked a bit about how we've created a Green Team, and we'll create a Green Team Action Plan as the two mandatory actions. We're also scheduled to participate in a Green Team training. We did it three years ago, and we're scheduled to do one for this go-around on January 15th of 2026. And so that evening, SMC will come and will help, will go over what our, what we submitted for 2023, and go over our application, and help get us started on the road to our action plan. Two other things in this sub, Green Team subcategory that we could, that we should be able to do are to conduct community barriers and benefits assessment. And that can be, so basically, since we'll be surveying our residents, asking them about different things in sustainability, we can then take it a step further and do a second survey, and ask about a particular, a particular item of sustainability that they may be interested in, and figure out what the barriers and the benefits to that could be. Another one is a Sustainability Resource Center, and that's something that can live, be a physical resource center and/or a virtual resource center. So a lot of municipalities have either a website and/or social media that they use to advertise, you know, to advertise events, to share resources, and basically provide regular updates about local sustainability initiatives. So that's something that we could feasibly see as being part of the Town of Bel Air website. Some other items in the Community Action category, community-based public art. Town of Bel Air is, has a wonderful collection of murals, sculptures, public art, and is something that we keep building on each year. Hold a Green Fair. We, every third Saturday of September, have the community collection, and that counts as our, as our Green Fair. Participation in Maryland Green Schools. We have four Maryland Green Schools within our town limits. They are Bel Air High School, which is our longest-running. They have been a green school since 1999, so they're actually certified bronze in that category. Bel Air Middle School, St. Margaret's School, and the newest is John Carroll School, just became one in 2025. We also are able to count Red Pump Elementary School, because even though it's outside of our boundary, we have residents that, that attend that school, and they are also a green school. And then our students also attend two certified green centers, which are Hartford Glen and Eden Mill Nature Center. So our Innovative Demonstration Project for Community Action is our chess tournament, which has now been going for six years and is in collaboration with Emerton Recreation Council, and is held here in October at the Armory. Another action, an action that we don't do that is also in, that is in this category is a public Wi-Fi zone. And that's something that could either be within a municipal facility or in a particular section of a town, something that I've noticed while looking at other towns, you see a lot more in, like more rural areas, areas where a public Wi-Fi zone might be benefit, where not everyone might have internet. So Action Two is Community-Based Food Systems. So some of the ones that we do include, now, this has been going for 50 years, is our Local Farmer's Market. Every year, we have the Garden Mart as our spring transplant sale, and we have the Community Garden at St. Matthew Lutheran Church. Some other things in this, other options in the, in this category include a local food fair, which would be basically vendors that are maybe local restaurants, local groups that provide local food, a local cooking, food cooking and preservation classes. That's something that can happen in conjunction with, with local businesses, or the University of Maryland Extension. Another option is the Fall Transplant Sale. Something new that we get to add is our Backyard Chicken Ordinance. So we get credit for that now. Other options in this category are a local food forest. So Avenue Grace, actually, I found out recently, has a local food forest. That is basically an area where volunteers take care of trees, shrubs that produce fruit and berries, and then make them available to the public. They usually have events, and that's something that they combine with local, local cooking demonstrations initiatives. So another option could be a municipal CSA drop-off location. CSA is a community, is community-supported agriculture, where people buy shares in a farm's crops and pick them up from a location weekly. There are CSAs nearby, including within town limits, but this would be specifically if we had a location on a town property. And then also the option for innovative demonstration projects in this category. Action Category Three is Energy. This is a category where we have a few items that we may not be able to renew on this go-around. One of those is the Municipal Energy Audit that was last completed with Johnson Controls, Inc. in 2018, so it might be a little too old to count for this go-around. But they did help the town with a 25% savings in energy costs when we, when they did the, the audit. And as part of that, they evaluated it for three years afterwards, in 2019, 2020, and 2021. Two other things that we may not be able to count on this are the Maryland Smart Energy Community Program. This year, it was replaced with the Local Government Energy Modernization Program. And unfortunately, we found out about the grant opportunity for that a little too late, but maybe is something for next year, and the next cycle, we might be able to do again. Residential electric vehicles and public charging stations. We had public charging stations in the garage, which turned out to be a fire hazard. So while fortunately they were moved to the town whole lot, unfortunately, that meant that they were no longer available for public use. So while they're used to charge municipal vehicles, we don't, we no longer have the facilities available for residential at, at this point. That might be something that we might want to consider changing. Two things that we can do again are municipal renewable energy. We have solar panels on the roof of Town Hall, and there might be a possibility or potential for solar panels on other buildings. Municipal Electrical Vehicles, we have the one plug-in electric hybrid vehicle, hybrid vehicle used for parking enforcement. So that counts for us. Two other things in this category, other than a potential for an innovative demonstration project, would be residential energy efficiency. And so that would be like a education outreach to the community about existing utility state and federal programs to promote home energy efficiency, and encouraging residents to make environmentally friendly decisions. Action Four is Greenhouse Gas. And I should have noted, too, that anything with the asterisk next to it is one of those priority actions that we do. So Municipal Carbon Footprint is one of those, because we do measure the energy costs and usage of the town facilities, vehicles, and the streetlights. Other options in this category, and these are ones that, if you were interested in doing, would be a much more intensive, longer effort, would be to do a measurement of the community carbon footprint. So that would be measuring the greenhouse gas usage of the municipality's residents, schools, businesses, and industries. Doing a climate action plan, so is not something that we currently do in the town, but it could be something, would basically consist of a set of strategies and actions designed to reduce the impact that a municipality has on the climate. And then as an additional step to that, a climate change adaptation element can be added to help plan for a community's vulnerability to the impacts of climate change, and determine strategies that will help it adapt to those impacts. And then, of course, the option for an innovative demonstration project. Action Five is Health and Wellness. This is a category where we have a potential to add some actions, in, in particular, under Workplace Wellness. We could join the Healthiest Maryland Businesses, and as part of that, would be flushing out our Workplace Wellness Program, which we do have a Workplace Wellness Program. We, our town does do lunch and learns for the employees, and then also has, and is expanding the Employee Gym in the Armory. Our Innovative Demonstration Project, projects here in the town, we have several that actually fall under this category, existing as well as potential new ones. We have the AED stations that have been installed in each park, and the Office Street Pocket Park, and at William Street by the Maunpaugh Trail. We used to use, oh, that's a different category. So an additional innovative project, there was the Story Walk last year in Rockfield Park that, about belonging and community, and, and it should be encouraging for mental health. And there's also been, you know, there could be potential for upgrades to the, the town parking garage for suicide prevention. So that could also be something that would be an innovative project for health and wellness, and improve the health of, of our residents. Another idea for that could, could be upgrading the CCTV cameras around the town and the parking garage. As far as pesticide-free zones, we used to use goats as an innovative way to, oh, power went out. It's back on. So we used to use goats to help with weed management, but the lady who ran that program has retired. However, this year, our town's Tree Committee worked with the county, as well as other local businesses and groups, on vine removal days at the Maunpaugh Trail. So that is a pesticide-free way of dealing with invasive vines. Another thing in this category that we, that is a potential action would be anything doing with, to do with children's environmental health. So that could be any kind of programs that are geared towards health with children, whether that's asthma, maybe anti-ending vape, or turning in vape programs, things like that would count. And the town is part of the local health initiative, along with Upper Chesapeake and other organizations in the county. So that might be a potential opportunity for something. Action Six is Historic Preservation. Is the one category that we have 100% completed. The, we have a historic area zoning ordinance that we've had here in the town since 1980 that basically established our Historic Preservation Commission, and the ability to historically designate properties in order to help protect them, and our, and the historic nature of our town. We have one National Register Historic District, and that is the Courthouse District. So the Courthouse, Office Street, Cortlandt Street, the, the buildings around. In that district, eight of those properties are historically designated. So those are the ones that have the extra protection. As far as local historic property tax initiatives go, recently passed legislation to, to up the property tax credit up to, up to 25% for property owners that maintain or improve their properties with, with historic materials. We also have been a certified local government since 2016, which basically means that, Certified Local Government is a program with the Maryland Historical Trust and the National Park Service. And it, that's, having that status allows us access to grant funds and resources for projects that benefit preservation efforts, promote local heritage, and document historical sites. And planning, research, and analysis are also eligible for grant funds. We, a couple years ago, won a grant for architectural surveys to be done on several properties within the town. And we also have earned several grants to, for education for our Historic Preservation Commissioners. As far as innovative demonstration projects go, the Historic Walking Tours Guide and Map is now available online. And we had an Eagle Scouts install historic plaques on historically designated buildings in town. So now almost every single building has a plaque showing that it's part of our program. And we did a lot of activities to celebrate Bel Air's 150th. So our showcase, which also included guiding, guided tours. So Action Seven is Local Economies. And we have a GIS map on our website that promotes shopping, dining, and services within the Town of, of Bel Air that serves as our local business directory. There's an annual commercial real estate stakeholders and Realtors, oh, sorry, retailers meeting that counts as our local business roundtable. And we have a local purchasing preference policy, where vendors receive a 15% preference boost to their application for procurement if they are within town limits, and 5% if they are within the county limits. And there's several other options under the Bi-Local category, such as a Bi-Local Campaign, a local business procurement notices, economic analysis of procurement practices. There's also a Green Business Regi, Recognition, and a Maryland Green Registry, so joining and promoting that, as well as a Green Business Certification Program. Green Purchasing. We do follow the policy IEO5, Green Purchasing, which was started in 2014 in the Town of Bel Air, and we piggyback on Hartford County's contract with an office supply company. So this is an area where we can also earn points if we, if we evaluate our current purchasing practices, because we do purchase when we can as part of our policy, recycled products and environmentally preferable products, and work with vendors that supply those. Waste Reduction and Recycling. Organic Waste Composting, we do a little bit of in the town with our leaf collection in the fall. And, but that's converted into compost. We, we could do something similar to what the City of Avenue Grace does. They have, you've seen the, the photo there, they have a little, like compost area where residents can go and actually bring compost. And they've actually, as was explained to me, they've grown that area. It started a lot smaller, and now they're up to five compost cans. Another thing that could be done is to implement a waste reduction program. Two other things that we do in the Local Economies category is that since 2001, we have been part of the Maryland Main Sheet Program, and have, since 2003, have had the Bel Air Downtown Alliance. And we, for our Innovative Demonstration Project, have the Armory Marketplace Incubator Program, which is, which is now in, I want to say it's sixth year? Around there, yeah, is- Around there, yeah, and is, is doing very well. Action eight is natural resources. It's worth noting, even though I'm the one giving the presentation and kind of heading up this effort, that I won't be doing this alone. I'll be working with other departments. So, local economies, I'll be, you know, working with you, Angela. Natural resources is something that's Charlie, Department of Public Works, your category. Some of the things that we currently do for natural resources, we have a watershed plan. And we do watershed stewardship. We have a, basically, we have outreach efforts related to water conservation and stormwater maintenance. We have written materials, including even a coloring book for kids. And we also have a rain barrel program for our residents in town. In the photo there, you can see one of our, a table with a lot of our watershed materials at one of our, at one of many town events. We have a stormwater manager coordinator, Josh, on staff. Other things in this category for watershed stewardship could be to facilitate engagement in existing watershed stewardship opportunities, provide voluntary opportunities for citizen engagement in watershed stewardship, provide incentives for watershed stewardship on private lands. And then stormwater management, we do stormwater management. Just what we currently do may not fit what they're, what they consider for their certification for stormwater management program and for stormwater fee structure. Septic management's not really something that we have in the town. Do we even have any properties with, okay, well, then maybe that is something. Septic Systems Assessment and Inventory, Dedicated Septic System Fund. Water Conservation, possibilities with developing a water conservation plan and outreach program. So, pet waste, something that we can add to our 2026 application is our pet waste program. We do have a pet waste station at Rockfield Park off of Ewing. And other actions that kind of go along with that, sort of a multi-step thing is, you know, to implement a pet waste education program, adopt a pet waste ordinance. But I, I do think we could definitely get credit for our, for having a pet waste program. We do have an insect hotel that is at Rockfield Park. That's another project that a scout did. So, two other things that fall under wildlife, Be City USA and the National Wildlife Federation Community Wildlife Habitat Certification. Now, this is something I looked into, with, we looked into with the Tree Committee. That, that is something that takes a lot of work. And that's another thing to, I don't have the point values for all these things here. Some things offer a lot more points than others. Some things, it's almost like they, you know, they give points based off if you're already doing something versus, you know, if you were to start something. That particular item, for instance, is only five points. Is it worth, you know, going through this, you know, years-long multi-step effort to do that? Maybe it is, maybe it isn't. But when we spoke with the Tree Committee last, it seemed like it wasn't something that, to do it at this time. But, something that the Tree Committee is a part of is Tree City USA and has been for 32 years. As part of that, they have an annual tree plan. And they do outreach each year at the opening day of the farmer's market with their tree seedling giveaway. For innovative demonstration projects, we have the Chesapeake Sensory Playground at Rockfield Park, which is a water feature that, you know, teaches about, about watersheds. And then we also have the Bel Air Five, the Insects and Butterflies. Action nine is planning and land use. The one that we do participate in for that is participation in the DHCD, Department of Housing and Community Development, Sustainable Communities. And most recently, we received grant money from them to make improvements to Courthouse Square, Courthouse Square on Office Street and Cortlandt Street. There's also the opportunity for innovative demonstration projects as well as some land preservation efforts to conduct easement outreach that encourages inspection, evaluation, and stewardship and build easement inventory. The last action category is transportation. This is not one that we had in 2023, but we have three that we could, that we have done that we can add to our application for 2026. And that includes our bicycle and pedestrian plan, which I presented to you all and you all approved earlier this year. The Complete Streets Policy and Program. Last year, we worked with, we were part of the Complete Streets Leadership Academy and did the Quick Build Project at Main, Bond, and Gordon Streets, which also is a pretty innovative demonstration project. We also worked with Cities of Aberdeen and Haverty Grace with State Streets for All. And it's, and is something that we are looking into doing something, looking at our next intersection where we could do a quick build project, potentially at North Main and Lee Street. So, realize that was a lot. Fortunately, we have seven months between now and our deadline, but there's still lots to do between now and then. So, our next steps include the green team, green team training with SMC the evening of January 15th and to work on 2026 grant application opportunities and to schedule regular meetings with the Sustainability Work Group and decide on new short-term and long-term actions to prioritize. So, with that, I want to just leave with a draft vision. This is, again, all very preliminary, basically looking at the, our strategic plan and the bicycle pedestrian plan and trying to kind of put together a draft vision that the green team envisions. The town of Bel Air is a socially and environmentally sustainable community that provides a great place for people of all abilities and ages to live, work, and play. To achieve this goal, the town will build upon the already extensive sustainability measures it performs and improve them in order to reduce barriers and enhance amenities in the town. So, I now open, thank you all, and I now open the floor to questions.
Going back to the composting item, this is something that I mentioned to Director Small a little while ago, and he said that you'd be presenting on this and to hold it until then. I was approached by a local resident who was interested in seeing something like what Haverty Grace does in the town of Bel Air. And I'm always interested in providing new services to our residents if we can and if it makes sense. I spoke with Councilwoman Casey Boyer from Haverty Grace, who is the lead down there on that issue. And I don't have the, the dollar figures off the top of my head, but it was not particularly cost prohibitive. It was something in the ballpark of a couple thousand dollars a year to afford that service. So, could you talk about what, in your mind, implementing something like that would look like in the town?
Oh, sure. So, just in a preliminary discussion with Director Small, we talked about that might be something that we could, we could do something, a setup that's similar to Haverty Grace. And probably the best location for that might be near DPW and Planning, since that's an area where people already come to, to do the recycling with the motor oil and such. So, it's a, but, so, yeah, it's definitely something that, I agree, that is, is something that we want to look further into and would love to have you help champion for the town.
Yeah, I, I think that that's worthwhile looking into because, you know, obviously there's, the reason why Haverty Grace's program has been so successful, as I understand it, what Councilwoman Boyer shared with me, is that it was originally co-located with their farmer's market. And their theory that was vindicated was that the demographic that is apt to attend a farmer's market tends to overlap with the demographic that uses composting services. And it was so successful that when the farmer's market moved, it actually didn't, it hurt them a little bit, but it didn't hurt them all that much because they had already learned the behavior of, this is where I go to do my composting. So, they continue to divert, you know, many thousands of pounds. Again, a couple of months ago, I knew that number off the top of my head. However, many thousands of pounds, it was several hundred tons of waste they diverted from the landfill and had composted instead, which is great. And it's, you know, a service that can be provided to residents for a relatively modest sum that I believe they work with Vet Composting is the name of the team that comes in and processes their, their, their waste. So, that's something that I'm interested in, in looking at. And I think that if it makes sense financially and practically, logistically, something that we can look at in terms of providing for, for our residents.
That's great, and I, I think that's really great, too, that they tied it in with the farmer's market. If that's a, that might be a possibility that we could explore as well.
Laura, I had a comment on the natural resources and water consumption or conservation. With the looming 50% increase in our potential, potentially in our water bills coming up, might be a good idea, maybe looking into how can our residents conserve water to keep their bills low?
Definitely.
Something, so, we weren't doing anything in that area now, from what I saw on your charts, right?
Yeah, so, they kind, so, it's kind of in two categories, right? There's water conservation, and then there's like a watershed stewardship outreach program as well as the voluntary opportunities. There's a little bit of overlap there, but it's definitely something that I think we could, we could.
Look into.
Yeah.
I think that may be of value to the residents, to the citizens.
Definitely.
Because of potential increase in our water bills.
Yes.
One other question, you said there was grant money available for some things?
Yes, so, 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 there's some grants that are directly available through SMC. And then there's other grants that are available through different initiatives in the program. So, like, for instance, the SMC has a, has, has like a more general grant that you could apply any number of these actions to. And then there's also specific grants for, that are related to energy as well as, so, the Historic Preservation, that grant is through the Certified Local Government Program. So, there's different, so, some of them are through other like state initiatives but are part of these actions. And then there's the overall grants. Now, I did include in the packets they handed out, the, there was a sheet with some of the grant opportunities. And I don't know if, now Kevin, was that included with the commissioners?
Yes.
Okay, so, you should have that as well.
Okay, because I was just wondering if grant money would be available to help with the startup of what Jake was talking about by composting, the composting initiative?
Possibly, although if it's something with that modest of a sum, then might, that actually might not, it might be too low for a grant. Because some of the grant programs are for, are for, so, I know the one grant program that I was looking at is for $20,000, for instance. So, if the, so, if the composting is only for a small fraction, that might not be a good fit. But there could be other grants that that could be a good fit for. Because some, some, some grants have a particular, you know, like a range to apply. Some have a very set number, some have a range to apply in. And then some are just, or it could be any number. Just depends on the particulars of the grant.
All right, thanks.
Yep.
Well, thank you so much for coming and doing your presentation. I know it was postponed a little bit, but it's, it's better to have the larger audience, I think, so we can get these ideas. And I think the one for composting sounds like one that everybody's interested in, so that'd be great.
Definitely, you're welcome.
Thank you so much.
Yes.
Also to mention that the Commissioner Chance was the representative on the Sustainability Work Group. If anybody wants to be on that work group, please let either Laura or myself know.
All right. So, next on our agenda for our town meeting on December 1st at 7:00 PM right here in Town Hall will be ordinance 851-20. Oh, sorry. See that? When you, when you reverse the order of things, I'm like, we moved. Okay, sorry.
I was absolutely happy with not talking.
There you go.
But since you opened the door.
Sorry.
Not a problem.
We need your report, too.
So, thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for indulgence with letting Laura go first. That lets her get home a little bit earlier this evening. So, I just have a few things on my list to cover. First off, in terms of just the construction and repaving of Pennsylvania Avenue that's currently underway, that was supposed to have been gone through tonight, most likely finished. But the weather has, has affected their ability to pave, so they're going to move that to next week. Our fingers crossed that everything will be done in time for the Christmas parade. That was our mission, or I should say, our, our objective for them to get done. But anyway, for tonight, in case you're wondering, it is canceled. It will be, it'll come back next week and be finished next week. I know, Madam Chair, you've already responded, but just for the benefit of our viewing audience and other commissioners, the PSC hearing for Maryland American Water, Mr. Smart, will be on December the 8th at 6:00 PM at the council chambers. There is a request, I did forward the email to everyone, there is a request to see, notify them so you can speak. I know Madam Chair has already done that, that way they'll have you on the working list. The Greater Bel Air Committee, Greater Bel Air Community Foundation has awarded $12,500 to us for the renovation of Allison Park. So, that's sort of the first drop in the bucket, if you will, towards our mission to renovate that project, to renovate that park over the next year. And received that check earlier this week.
Eddie, was that in our budget to renovate Allison Park? By grant or by town funds?
There is, go ahead, Kevin, I'm sorry.
Boat, so, this is, we were expecting, we were expecting the 12-5?
Yes.
Okay.
We applied for it, it was, it was part of our.
We asked for more, but we got 12-5.
Okay. Sorry. Sorry, continuing. The, wanted to get the board's concurrence on a request. I would like, December 26th falls on a Friday this year. I wanted to go ahead and get concurrence from the board now to go ahead. Okay.
I'll, I'll second that, yes.
Okay, very good. All right, so, we'll move ahead with that, that's off that list.
We're giving them off Friday.
Oh. Yes.
Would you like to say no now that we've publicly, publicly been asked to concur? I thought you would.
All he had to say was that December 26th is on Friday.
Right, exactly, then you know what's coming next.
So, that's, and I did check, Madam Chair, I know you often ask, I did check with Director Klein. We will manipulate recycling and trash that week to make sure. And then with David in the audience, we'll make sure that the public knows because Friday is typically recycling day, so.
That's very important. Because the, the most important thing that I'll say tonight in Commissioner's comments is that recycling day this week is tomorrow.
Tomorrow, that's correct. Also, I, I did send an email to the commissioners, but just as a reminder, the Army Alliance and the Aberdeen Chamber of Commerce are sponsoring a Coffee and Conversation. That'll be on December the 12th at 9:00 AM. It'll be a Ruggles Golf Course, if you're interested. If you did not get the email, let me know, and I can resend it to you. The, Krista, rather, Lisa and I are starting to receive our capital and operating and personnel budget requests from department heads. And I know it's early for the commissioners, but I just wanted to get on your radar in case there's anything budget-related that you all want to be considered added into the budget for FY '27. You have plenty of time, just wanted to get you thinking about it. As you see stuff around town that you may want to work on, just let me know. We'll get that in, get that into the budget, get that programmed in. From my agenda priorities list, obviously, we'll be talking about DRAs tonight. The December 9th, so that you can plan ahead, the December 9th work session, I have three topics planned. One will be the Parking Analysis and Parking Fund. Lisa Moody has asked that that be put on to, put on the agenda for discussion. It'll be an amendment that'll be required. It'll also help discuss other changes to the Lee Street parking issue and also remove parking vouchers and other parking-related issues. So, Lisa will have that before you on the 9th for discussion. Steve Klein will have before you condo condominium trash pickup. We originally set that for October the 14th. Steve needed more time to acquire more details, so that will be on the work session. And we will provide you for some discussions with the Neighborhood Traffic Management Program. The commissioners had asked that we look at the structure of that and. The commissioners had asked that we look at the structure of that and how we, how we proceed with that. We've met as a group, we'll have some ideas about how we'd like to see the structure move forward. But also Kevin has submitted, because there was a lot of questions you, you had as a group about the manual itself and utilization of the manual and the formulas and so forth. So Kevin has sent you all a redlined copy for your consideration, just so you'll have time to take a look at that. Moving forward into January, just for your, just so you can plan accordingly, we'll be discussing at the January thirteenth work session. We'll be talking about cannabis, we'll be talking about the use of the amphitheater, and we'll also be discussing wind sale, sign regulations and code. So that will be on the thirteenth. And there'll be, there's a number of other things that we have on hold, but we're waiting for the appointment of the fifth commissioner, if you will. Uh, and so I'll hold off on reporting on those until we line all those up, so.
When we, when we discuss parking, will we also be discussing some of Commissioner Chismar's proposals regarding parking?
No, that's a different, that'll be a different, much broader con, this is just a, um, this is, this is, excuse me, this will be just local limited parking issues that Lisa wanted to talk about related to Lee Street vouchers, some funding and stuff.
All right, so it's not about the broader.
No, sir.
Budgetary issues?
No, I have that, I have that on once we get the fifth commissioner on board.
Okay.
If that, if that works out.
Got it.
Hey, December thirteenth, so there was wind sale, cannabis.
January thirteenth will be wind sales, cannabis and the town amphitheater.
Okay, new amphitheater.
And I believe, Madam Chair, that's all I have at this point in time.
Just as a clarification, the manual has not been sent to the commissioners yet, because I'm still waiting on feedback from the other NTP members, so. Yeah, as soon as I get that, I will forward it on.
Thanks, Kevin, I didn't see that dump truck backing up on me, so. No, just kidding, I apologize, I thought that actually had gone out to you, we will get that to you in time to read.
And one of the things that, when we discuss that, I'd be interested in looking at is what's the county's program, how they've adopted it. They're a little different than us because they have an executive and a legislative branch. And any of the other municipalities or somebody else that's done a?
I have that for the county, I don't have the other two municipalities, so I can.
And I don't know if there's anybody that is like, um, where you would look, like a bigger Montgomery County, some places has got a lot of traffic, Prince George's, anybody that's got like, you know, a lot more issues maybe than we would, so they may have addressed those in their policies would be a, a thought. And I like to reinvent the wheel and I'd like to learn from everyone else's mistakes or experience, so. All right, anything else for Eddie? No, all right. In that case, now we'll talk about what is on our tentative agenda for our town meeting on December first at seven PM, which is ordinance eight fifty-one dash twenty-five, amending the Bel Air Town Code, chapter four fifty, vehicles and traffic, article five, meter and lease rates. And who is presenting on that? Who's doing it, meters and, and lease rates? There you go. Well, we're, we're, the elections is postponed because we're not quite ready to go with that one yet.
Town had, um, the Lee Street lot was in huge demand. There was a lot of people who wanted to utilize the Lee Street lot, not only private businesses, but also Hartford County and the town. What, what that meant was, it was even with, even with overbooking, it became, uh, we had too many users for the number of spaces in the lot. So what the commissioners did at that point was to allow an overflow onto Lee Street from the parking lot itself. There are parking, parallel parking spaces that are metered that, um, they designated as the overflow spaces. And those spaces were, um, if you had a Lee Street parking lot hang tag, you could park there without being ticketed. So that went on for several years. This year, we have more businesses over in that area. And they are, they would like to see those parking spaces that are parallel spaces on Lee Street available for their customers, which makes lots of sense. The, also, the number of, that, that parking lot is not as in, as a high demand as it used to be. I don't know whether that's, some of those things are, are the county or have moved some of their offices, but also some of the businesses don't use as many spaces. So the existing ordinance shows that overflow parking is on both sides of Lee Street. There are five parallel spaces on the south side and there are eight parallel spaces on the north side. So what we would be proposing to do is to revise the ordinance, so it's only the south side parking. So it's those five spaces that are on the south side of Lee Street are, would be considered the overflow spaces. The ones on the north side would then be, kind of revert back to where, what they were and become just regular metered spaces that customers can use for the businesses that are located there.
Do we have any idea how many people are actually using those overflow spaces currently?
It, it kind of goes up and down.
Like how much use do they get?
Yeah, it goes up and down because some spaces are, uh, sometimes they're in high demand. There, I think there's an accountant over there, so tax season, use, the, comes, brings in extra help. But other times, not so much, so I, I don't know, you use them all the time, I can defer to you if you want.
I agree that the, uh, demand fluctuates depending on the, the season or even time of day. There, um, tends to be, there tend to be more people who are coming in in the middle of the day that, um, that those overflow spaces are used. It's never to a point where we need both sides of the street. So all we're trying to do with this change would be to, um, keep those folks from parking in front of the businesses and use the already available spaces that are on the south side closest to the parking lot.
And I, and I am all for that, that I understand why the businesses want those open. I was just wondering how much we've oversold the Lee Street lot?
Thirty percent, I believe. And there hasn't been any market, um, there hasn't been, uh, a lot of, um, we haven't had any complaints for people saying, I can't find a space.
That's good, I like.
But that, that one is the one that has gone beyond the normal overbooking. Bond Thomas Lot used to have a thirty percent overbooking and there was always people that were out during the day that it never really had any problem. Lee Street is, you know, it's probably, it's always kind of been, I don't want to say the problem child, but it's always been the one that's been the highest demand.
So is, is the Lee Street lot, uh, metered?
No.
No, it's permanent?
Mm-hmm. And we do have some leaseholders in that lot who, uh, had been allowing some telework that are now in the office more, I think we've seen a shift. So even though he, we had overbooked at that level for several years, it has become more necessary that we might need those overflow spaces as everyone has come back to the office.
Yeah, COVID helped us out quite a bit, but not so much anymore.
Well, only on a few things.
Right. Yeah.
How many spots are in the Lee Street lot?
Yeah, there are twenty-nine spaces in the Lee Street lot. There are, would be forty-two available with overbooking.
Right.
Right now, the number of.
Yeah, if you, if you added the thirteen, right now, there's, there's, with the overbooking or the, the on-street parking, you're up to forty-two.
Um, yeah, when you add the, we normally apply this thirty percent overbooking to just about all the lots. The only one that really goes over, if you have twenty-nine spaces, uh, and you apply the thirty percent, it goes to the forty-two. The number of spaces that are leased on that lot is thirty-eight, so it's not quite up to the overbooking. So you're looking at.
But I think what Commissioner Chismar is saying is that if you take twenty-nine and then you add five and then you add eight, you get forty-two.
Forty-two.
Right.
Yeah.
So is that, is that on purpose? It's not, it was not on purpose, that was something that was based just on a percentage.
Right. Got it, okay, well.
So by taking away the eight, we're really not, given that everybody's not there all the time.
Yeah.
The, it's still going to be, we should still have room. We should be able to satisfy the leaseholders' needs with the, the twenty-nine plus five or thirty-three, or thirty-four spaces.
Yes, because the, like I said, people aren't there all the time and the overbooking has not been an issue in the other lots. So it should be able to, be appropriate for that lot.
And parking enforcement did do a study of that for us in the past year or so to analyze at different times of day, how many spaces were still available, um, in the lot and there was availability, correct?
Yeah, all the, just about all the time. When we had the parking study, if you go back and look at that, it'll show you that there's spaces available most of the time in that lot.
So this will require an ordinance change?
Yes, it's actually just adding four words.
I thought it might have been just changing a number.
It's adding.
Or deleting words, saying the north side.
Instead of it saying on-street parking along Lee Street, it's going to say on-street parking along the south side of Lee Street.
Got it.
Right.
And then we would notify all the, the leaseholders.
Yes.
About the change?
Yeah, yeah, that, those letters are going out right now from Lisa's office. The, she'll let them know about that, we're going to actually add a little map to make sure people know where to park.
Right.
And the, one of the other things that, that seemed to be a problem, and Angela could chime in, is the, people were parking on-street as their first go. Yeah, we're going to let them know is, look, if there are spaces available in the lot, that's where you park first. This is only overflow.
Right.
Which is sort of a problem to enforce or, because you don't, you don't know if somebody parked on the street and the lot was full.
Right. Yeah.
Or they just parked on the street because they, you know, it was more convenient for them for whatever reason, so.
Basically, the honor system.
It is the honor system, so, all right. All right, any other questions on this? Okey-dokey. The sewer root control contract, this must be Mr. Charlie Dawson.
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. Um, yeah, this is our, our, this is our, our root control program, we do, uh, three sections in town yearly, uh, in a, annual, I'm sorry, annually. We rotate them in three sections annually. Uh, this is a homestead area we'll be doing this year. Again, we'll be piggybacking off the contract, the Galveston area council contract we did last year and do it about forty-five thousand dollars worth of root control, helps maintain our system, prevent backups and, uh, anything else.
It's really important that that work well.
Yes, yes, it's.
Did we put that out to bid or is that, you know, one, one contractor that we're working with?
Uh, we work with, we piggyback off of Duke's root control, we've used Baltimore City contract in the past, Hartford County uses them. Uh, this year, the cheaper price was Houston-Galveston contract, it's a, it's a cooperative agency that does, so we did not put it out for bid, no.
Okay.
But we still have a price that was achieved through competitive bidding, just we're pigging back, we want somebody else's.
Somebody else's competitive.
Yes, yes.
Right.
Sorry.
That's okay, and what was the price of this contract?
It's, uh, it's, we have forty-five thousand, right now, it's estimated about forty-two, uh, based on the estimate they gave us. You know, we could run until a couple of feet here, more or less, so it kind of varies, but we'll be under forty-five thousand.
Okay.
And this is where you, you scope the, the lines and see where roots are and then you go mechanically, or is this done with?
No, this is where they do the chemical root control. So basically, yeah, they'll go through and it's like a thick shaving cream substance where they'll shoot the main lines. It, it kills the roots in the main line and about, um, you know, four feet back of the main line going up the lateral. Uh, it's, I have a nice little video on it one time, if you want to see it, but we do it at our, um, presentation for the citizens, it's kind of cool, but yeah.
And so is that each year, you do a different area, so you said this year it's Homestead Village, I believe, or?
Uh, yes, sir, yeah, so basically, it's Homestead Village, this year, we do, uh, most of the areas, we only, we do terracotta pipes, so like, you know, Major's Choice, we don't do that much because it's all plastic, it's a newer development. So mostly, uh, it's terracotta and the other, uh, that has trouble with roots, that break up the roots. So we try to, to maintain that pipe, the root, we do root control in those areas, there's Homestead, there's Jackson Boulevards, some of that. Uh, over in you, over in your area, there's, uh, the older sections of town have terracotta, so Broadway, stuff like that, so. Newer section of Broadway has some, uh, plastic, but mostly it's the older sections.
I actually did one of these jobs on McCormick Street a few years ago, so. We were the subcontractor to take all the trees down and I think somebody else came in and made sure they don't come back, so.
Yeah, basically, it's what we try to, they do, I mean, it, that's why we do it every three years, it only, like, they only guarantee it for three years, the chemical substance that does this, so that's kind of why we have a three-year rotation on the three areas in town.
All right, thank you very much.
Sure.
And next is the Public Works Modular Custom Tool Shop cabinet purchase.
Uh, yeah, so, so, uh, we have, um, some of our coke cabinets with our shop area that takes care of about a hundred vehicles, you know, maintenance-wise. Uh, they're like thirty to thirty-five years old and we're looking to replace those. Uh, we do have, again, a piggyback contract with Sourcewill, uh, Snap-on Tool Industry that pretty much, uh, we're using that contract to piggyback off pricing of these cabinets.
I'm just curious, do they have an expected lifespan?
Yeah, usually, uh, you know, depending on obviously the shop and the main, but, you know, I think it's past, I'd say twenty-five years myself, but, um, depend. At home, like mine lasts forever because I don't use it much, but here, here, they use a lot more, so you start to, the, uh, the bearings start to go out on them and stuff and that's what we're having trouble with right now, just to maintain a, a nice shop for them.
All right, any other questions? All right, in that case, we're moving on to Commissioner Liaison Reports. I'm going to go first. The Tree Committee met in early November and they are working on getting, um, the Major's Choice Champion Oak, uh, take, uh, looked at for fertilizer and whatever else it needs for its maintenance to make sure it stays in, you know, good, healthy shape. Um, so they've gotten some bids for that and we're working on figuring out who was going to be the winner. The delegation, the county delegation met in county council chambers. I went and discussed the Historic Preservation Commission legislation again. And the way we're going to proceed is we're going to ask the Attorney General's Office for an opinion on whether it should be a local bill or not, which is what was the problem last time. We thought it should be a local bill, legislative drafter said no. Um, it got pretty far along through the legislative process and then at the last minute, somebody said, I think this should be a local bill. So we were back to square one. And from our perspective, we don't care what it is as long as, you know, we get it through, so, and I, and we have no, um, concern over how Baltimore City does theirs. I remember last session, they want to continue to have theirs go directly to Circuit Court, which is certainly fine, you know, what is good for Baltimore City or Annapolis, may not, you know, work so well here. Everybody here wants it to go to the Board of Appeals, it's the first level of appeal, Stark Preservation Commission wanted that as well. So the delegation is certainly in support of that and will be, that's the way we'll be proceeding. And that will be all.
Both Appearance and Beautification and Economic and Community Development met the week before last. For Appearance and Beautification, it should appear quite obvious that Christmas is in full swing. The ladies are out decorating, um, and their, their work, I think, always jives quite nicely with the Winter Wonderland decorations, so the town of Bel Air is rapidly Christmasizing, um, in no small part thanks to their volunteer efforts and the volunteer efforts of countless others, so we appreciate them for that. And ECDC met, uh, the Thursday after, ABC met, uh, in large part to discuss, um, some of the changes that Commissioner Chismar is bringing forward to some parking policy. They, they had some good feedback for us and, as we mentioned earlier today, or earlier tonight, I should say, that conversation will continue, so I'm sure it won't be the last time that they discuss it because we, of course, don't have a final draft of any legislation. Once we do, they'll get an opportunity to review that as well.
Yeah, and I think they were going to, I thought ECDC was also looking at the, the fee and lieu about wood, they were going to discuss more.
Yeah.
Wood zoning districts and what's the dollar value put on that?
Both.
To give us some recommendations.
Both parking fee and lieu as well as the committing of town parking resources were, were discussed, yeah.
Right, but I thought they were good on town.
That, that seemed to me that way.
The leasing.
I mean, there was, there was much less discussion, there was a lot more discussion on parking fee and lieu, yeah.
Right. So, okay. Uh, planning and zoning, or the planning and Board of Appeals, we had no meetings. Kevin, I just got the packet, you said this week will be the Taco Bell redesign and for the next plan commission meeting.
And Auto Spa, yeah. For, for next week.
For next week, right.
The Auto Spa is look, to be located, proposed to be located on, um, I can't remember, the old Mazda dealership?
The Halloween store.
The Halloween store. The Halloween store, yeah.
Right.
And, um, and then this'll be a second try at the architecture for Taco Bell.
Not the California base we have.
It's barely not that, so I'm not too impressed.
No, okay, I haven't opened the package yet, so, sitting right here, alright.
And Commissioner Hanley is excused because he doesn't have any assignments yet.
And in by for assignments.
But later, later this evening. Um, staffing update, Mike.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At the moment, uh, there are no positions posted on the town's website. I am, I have received many applications for a part-time foul clerk position. That, uh, application window has since closed, and, uh, we've interviewed three candidates, and there'll be a handful of additional interviews coming after the Thanksgiving break. Hopefully, we'll be able to award that position before Christmas, but I hesitate to, uh, to, uh, make any promises, so we'll see how the holiday season treats us, and we'll see what types of candidates we continue to interview. Um, Public Works Department has interviewed, interviewed and hired a few individuals in the last month or so. They have successfully continued to come to work and are excellent additions to our team, so we're very happy to, to have them, and, uh, we don't have any jobs posted at the moment in the Police Department either, so. Knock on wood, I hope you don't jinx yourself by saying we're, we're in a good position, but, uh, that's it for staffing.
Alright, terrific.
And we don't, we don't have the committees and commissions in front of us, but I don't think that there's anything too urgent there. I mean, we have the same vacancies that we've always had, or that we've had for the past couple of weeks.
Yes, sir, that, uh, that is still posted online, so it's available for anybody to look at, so if there's any citizens watching at home, they'd like to see what vacancies might be coming up. They can see that chart posted on the Boards Committee Commissions page of the town's website, and, uh, and the same vacancies that exist, as Commissioner Taylor just said, uh, can be reviewed again at the upcoming work session on the ninth.
We do have a Cultural Arts Commission reappointment coming at the next, uh, work session. Uh, Nikki Jurgensen, it's, her date is not until January, but it falls before our, uh, board meeting, so I am gonna bring her forward at the next work session for reappointment, and I've already spoken to her, and she is interested in serving another term. Um, normally, Commissioner Chance was our liaison, so she would've been reporting on that, and of course Gavin doesn't have his, uh, appoint, his liaison duties yet, so I'll report out instead.
And, and I, I, I think I discussed, may have told you earlier, or in discussions with each of you, that there, there will be another opening, or will be an opening on the Planning Commission. Uh, Ms. Kelly has decided not to, uh, re-up, uh, she's been on the commission for fifteen years, and we appreciate the, the work that she's done over those years, so, uh, she has decided not to, uh, be considered for, uh, reappointment. So we do have an opening on the Planning Commission, in addition to the other ones, but still two on the Board of Appeals and, yeah.
Okay, anything else on that topic? Alright, the calendar. Um, I know on December twelfth, the nine AM Ruggles, I will not be able to be there, I have a prior commitment, so I don't know, uh, if anybody could check their calendar and see who else?
That's the twelfth?
The twelfth.
Okay, I might be able to do that, then.
It's December the twelfth, at nine AM. Right.
Kat Buttram will be attending on behalf of Economic Development, as I am, uh, not in the office that day.
I, I should be able to make that.
Yeah, I should be able to make it also.
Alright, great. Yeah, nine AM. So you guys could double-check your calendar and just respond to that RSVP, that would be terrific. We already discussed our December fifth, Friday at six PM, Paganist Street lighting.
Right.
So that should be on everybody's calendar, and then the other calendar conflict sorta that I saw was December the ninth is the Bella Rec Council's six PM Christmas, um, gathering, and we have a five fifteen work session. So I, did everyone, did they invite all of us? I know I saw an invitation. Everybody get an invitation? Okay, everybody got one then? Okay, so, and I know they had to save the date earlier, I think, that's why I knew about it before yesterday. Um, and we had some talk about, uh, juggling our meeting time for our five fifteen work session. Shall we, what's the feeling, we should move that? I hate to not, you know, go.
I'm fine with a four-thirty start.
Alright, Gavin, four-thirty? Alright.
Can we make it, though? We got through on the agenda. Right now, we said we had the parking issues and the condo garbage contract, is that all we have?
We had the parking analysis, condo trash, and the neighborhood, neighborhood traffic management program. I can certainly, um, Lisa specifically wanted the, the parking to go through, and we are under sort of a time crunch for Steve and the condo. I can put NTMP off to January if you like. The only issue with that is we, we do have some traffic complaints or concerns that we have backlog, maybe three, four, possibly. Those would be the only thing that are in the offing, 'cause we haven't, we haven't done anything with them pending.
Correct what we're gonna do with this.
But I can take that off and leave the other two, the directors, to ask specifically for them to be discussed.
I'm good with that.
Well, court suggestions moved to Monday?
Elections is pending as well, too, but that, that could also be postponed to January if necessary.
We can't do that, because that's the, um, the Maryland American Water.
Correct. Six PM, six PM is the hearing for that.
Okay, can't do that.
How long does the Tree Committee take to meet?
Uh, there's no meeting in December, so we could move it to Wednesday.
We can move it to Wednesday.
That way, we're not rushed, if we can do, fill our regular schedule.
Because I, yeah.
That would be my preference, is to move the work session to Wednesday, the tenth. Does that work for all the staff?
I'm already out of town.
That's okay.
But I can, I can have somebody cover it for me.
I think that is probably the way to go. We'll never get everybody to be able to make whatever change we're trying to do, so we will move the December ninth work session to Wednesday, December tenth, at five fifteen, and then that clears up our problem on the ninth with the Bella Rec Council. There you go. Alright.
Madam Chair, since I'm sort of part of NTMP, do you want me to still leave it for the tenth, or move it, then move that to January?
Uh, we were gonna move it to, leave it for the tenth, so that, 'cause we're trying to squeeze that in, and not put it off for too long.
I think it's likely to be several.
I don't think we're gonna resolve everything on the first go-round. I, I am sure we will not.
Very good.
Yes, and if everyone could just remember that December the eighth is the Maryland American Public Comment, so, um, if there's anybody, particularly, I think what would be useful is if there is any one that we can, uh, locate that falls into the category that I'm most concerned about, which is, you know, a family with a couple of kids that are using more water than, say, a single young person or a retired couple, you know, with, all the kids have grown and flown, those people are not gonna be, I, I don't understand the assumption that those people have less money, and that's why they're using less water. I mean, to me, a family with a couple of kids is gonna have less disposable income, whatever their actual income is, because they have so many expenses, and they're gonna use a fair amount of water if you have, you know, more people living in the home. So, um, if there's anybody we could think of that lives in that actual space, I think that would be useful for the commission to hear their testimony, because it's, it's kind of a big jump in your water bill, and y- you have got to have water to have a house that's livable.
Is that rate proposal, is that available to be viewed publicly?
Mm-hmm, it, it's all filed, um, and I know Steve Klein had emailed us all some of the stuff, so I will, um, locate it as well, Gavin, and send it to you, and there was a meeting where there was a big discussion, Maryland American came, and, uh, was quite a long presentation with questions from the board, and that was really, I mean, not only is there an increase, but it's a tiered increase, so that those that use less water will pay less for their water, and those that use more water will pay more for their water, where, as Steve pointed out, usually you get like a bulk rate if you use a lot, um, and their theory was that people that use more water have, have more money, and people that use less water have less money, and I just, I, um, I don't know the data source for that, and I had asked, and I'll have to check again to see if we've gotten that. I wanted to know for shut-offs, were they shutting off more people that use two thousand and fewer gallons, or more people that use four thousand and more gallons a month? You know, like, where is their shut-off? Those are the people that really are unable to afford their bill, and, I, I mean, if your water gets shut off, you, you not only incur the original cost, but you have to pay the shut-off turnoff on fee again as well. Um, it's a terrible position to be in, and I know when I worked for the county on shut-off day, the guys would go around with the wrench to turn off people's water, and they would not leave the neighborhood. They just, they just hang out in the area, because as soon as they did that, calls would come in, and people would use, you know, credit cards or some, I don't, to pay their bill, because you just can't, your, your house is just unlivable in about like an hour. So it is, it is a really important thing to remain affordable, and I don't understand, I know Steve asked a question why Severns was so much cheaper than the Maryland American rates for the town of Bel Air, and we also had a lot of questions about the tiered rate, because, you know, when you go to buy gas, gallon of gas is a gallon of gas, whether, no matter what your income level, and it's the same for your gas electric bill, you know, everything, all your utilities, all the things that you have to buy, groceries, um, so, so why water? What are, usually, tiered rates are used to discourage water consumption um, in places like, you know, California, they have droughts and that sort of thing, so I'm not, I don't, I don't understand the whole program.
Since he's no longer here, I will echo the sentiments that Commissioner Rutledge shared when we had the President of Maryland American, and say that, you know, on its face, the reasoning behind this is clearly farcical. I mean, just obviously, that's not the real reason. And I think he's right. I mean, I think that this is very clearly an attempt at social engineering to encourage people to use less water. I just wish they'd be honest and say that. So I, I think I'll, I'll be joining you at, at the hearing as well.
I, I welcome the company.
I plan on going, too.
Yeah, it's a, it's kind of a big deal, and it used to be that our water bills were quarterly, um, and everyone that I'm aware of has gone to monthly. City of Baltimore, like, every water place that I'm aware of, um, but our monthly bills are now what our quarterly bills used to be, and I understand that there's, you know, expenses, and it's more regulated, and we have PFAS and all this other stuff, but it, it needs to remain affordable, because people cannot live without water, so.
So, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Hanley, it's September the ninth was the work session where Maryland American appeared and testified. If you wanna pull the live streaming up, uh, it's probably first or second on the agenda, but September the ninth.
Okay, thank you.
Gavin, I just sent you the package they sent us about what they're proposing and all that stuff, and some testimony they gave before the, 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 the President and all that, so read that, and that's what we had before we, when we had questions for the President.
And what we were waiting for wa, were the public hearings, so that we could, we could go and present some testimony, so. I think that'll be important for us and for everybody that lives in the town. Alright.
Just a clarif, clarifying question. Uh, so the Tree Committee meeting is canceled for the tenth, is that correct?
Correct, there was no Tree Committee, um, in December.
We're gonna move the work session from the ninth at five fifteen to the tenth at five fifteen, and then you had mentioned at the beginning, there's a nine AM on December twelfth, what, what was that?
That is...
The Army Alliance at Ruggles.
Yes.
Army Alliance at Ruggles.
Army Alliance, okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, one more thing for the calendar, um, is on the fifth of December, Friday, the fifth is the University of Maryland Upper Chesapeake Medical System, uh, twenty-fifth anniversary recognition.
Which is on my calendar.
Thank you. I know several of you have RSVP'd already to that, nine AM.
And it's going to be at Upper Chesapeake, but we're not sure of the exact location yet.
Kat should be sending out the, uh, location update. It will be in their main lobby.
Okay, and then also on the fifth noon, there's the, uh, ribbon cutting for Cabob Corner. So those, those two things were both on my calendar, and I think I did RSVP to both.
Yes, you did, thank you.
That says it's on the fourth.
Yes.
Yes.
Just 'cause you put in an email, too.
Did I?
I wanted to make sure you had the right time.
It's not on my calendar yet, but it will be. It's not like fully, fully updated. Alright, any other count, it's a busy month.
It is a very busy one, certainly is.
And then it'll be January and a new year. Kind of shocking. Alright, so we're finished with the calendar items, unless anybody has anything else that we missed?
Just as a point of curiosity, um, this mi, this might be an Eddie question, this might be a Mike question, a luncheon learn on the second. I assume that that should be read to mean that we are discussing the dangers and safeties of lithium-ion batteries in general, and not specifically lithium, lithium-ion batteries at the Armory? We're just discussing it at the Armory?
We're discussing at the Armory, it's a presentation on the dangers of lithium-ion batteries.
Is that as it relates to just general life, things in town, okay?
Yes, because there's a high incidence of lithium-ion related fires connected to charging your phone, your laptop, scooters, not to mention electric vehicle fires as well, so I wanted to make staff aware of the dangers. It's one of the reasons why, um, mentioned earlier, why we took the, um, charging meters out of the parking garage.
Yes, absolutely.
Um, and moved them, which, to add on to what Laura said, Kevin and I have discussed alternative locations for exterior places, just not the parking garage.
Sure.
You all are welcome to attend a luncheon learn, too, I'm sure you know that.
I assume that's why it was on our calendar. And those batteries are starting to scare me. I don't, I don't leave anything in the house plugged in when I leave. Alright, next is our discussion of the Commissioner Liaison Assignments, and I know that Jake, you wanted to be the police, uh, liaison to the Police Department, which had been Jim Rutledge's, and somebody told me, Gavin, that you might be interested in historic preservation.
I sure am.
Alright, excellent.
Sold.
Sold, yes.
The tall man in the blue jacket.
That's him. Alright. So Jake, did you wanna get rid, did you wanna, not get rid of, but did you wanna trade off anything, uh, for the?
No, I would like to join that vaunted group of two commissioners that gets to have four assignments.
Assignments, okay.
Yes, uh, and I'm going to hold my hand for the other three assignments. I was, I was, um, nearly beaten with a stick uh, when I told ABC that I was looking at picking up police, because they were deeply concerned that that meant that I might be overboarding them, and I told them that they were gonna have to pry that one out of my hands, and I said much the same to Economic Development, so I'm good. I'm, I'd like to add police and hold the rest.
Alright. So Gavin, anything else you're interested in on Mary Chance's list or Jim Rutledge's list?
I'm interested in the Bella Rec.
Alright, we'll sell you that one.
Do they meet, do they meet often?
No, it says meet is necessary, so I doubt that.
I don't know if Jim.
You're welcome to attend their board meetings, kinda as a representative of the town of Bel Air. Julia Potler, our events manager, goes from time to time, but pretty much as necessary, she doesn't go to each and every one. So, uh, just getting to know their presidents, and their president, and their, and their board, and attending a meeting from time to time, or as requested.
And on the meeting schedules, Jake, for the Police Department, um, I know I got a email from Kim, um, second or third Wednesday of the month, does it make a difference to you, which one? Chief, does it make a difference to you, which one?
No, ma'am.
Well, in that case, I think I'm gonna pick the third, because the first one I have, uh, meeting with Eddie, and that'll sort of break up the month. Alright, so for Police Department, it's gonna be the third Wednesday of the month for Jake and I, and I will let Kim know if the chief forgets.
She keeps me in line, I'll tell you that.
I know she does. If she were here, I wouldn't have to send anybody an email, but, uh, we'll take care of that. Alright, so now, we have a couple of more left, which are Mary Chance's, and we also have one more Commissioner coming. This is what happens when you're last in. Uh, but we don't wanna make anybody feel bad, so Gavin, you can take a look at the list and think about it for another, you know, like, one, maybe. And then we'll work from there.
And get back, 'cause.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
We also need to add sustainability to Mary's list, it's not on here.
Right, that's right, thank you. All right.
Gavin, you could really pick up either one or two. And then that would leave the person sort of holding the bag with either three or four.
Holding the bag.
Yeah.
All right, well, think about that Gavin, what works with your schedule would of course be, you know, an important thing for you. Um, and then we'll maybe fill in or just wait until the fifth commissioner is on board. Because we don't expect to take too terribly long with that. So I think we've beaten as much as we can out of Gavin right now for the Commissioner liaison assignments. Anything else on those for right now? No?
The Committee for, for Seniors and Citizens in Need actually um, meets at eight thirty in the morning?
That's correct.
It in fact does.
Okay.
Making my, one of my least favored committees because of the eight thirty AM start.
That's getting to the point where I know that there's two of those times in the day.
You've gotta think about the demographics, Steve.
But not all, I know, but yeah.
About early risers. Yeah.
Right, but not all, all, some of them still work.
This is true.
I'm sure, you know, so I, that's why I just thought that eight thirty during was tough, but anyway.
All right, so next on our list is the discussion of the Development Rights and Responsibilities Agreement.
Okay. Uh, well, head it off. Right, I'll, I'll start it off, I know Liz, we've had some discussions, but whatever. You know, the, the DRRA concept, I, I think should be something we should put in our toolbox, whether we use it or not. But it's, it gives us an opportunity to have some say in, in, in what is being proposed by a developer. It also gives us the opportunity to get exactions from them. Uh, if, as long as we say that we're, you know, but what we're giving them is basically saying, we're not gonna change the rules on you once we enter into this agreement. I understand we've talked about this before, uh, the state was talking about having early vesting for residential, but not commercial. Who knows what they're gonna do this time around, but you know, uh, I think there's some opportunities with some stuff that's going on in town that we might be able to. Some, some developers would, might want to use that. And if it's, works to our advantage or both, the advantage of both them and the town, then why not enter a DRA agreement? But we have to have it on the books as something.
So I have a sort of theoretical question for Liz. If the state of Maryland does proceed with making Maryland an early vesting state for residential projects, what does that mean for mixed use projects?
Um, that would depend on whether or not the municipality con- considered mixed use projects, a residential concept or a commercial one.
Okay.
Um, if they created early vesting for residential, obviously that would not impact the commercial unless they included it. So DRRA's would still be on the table if it is con- considered commercial. Um, Kevin and I have spoken about this with respect to a particular project that is required to have fifty percent or more commercial. Um, and so because of that requirement, it's likely to fall. And I won't speak for Kevin, I'll let him speak, but that's likely to fall in commercial.
Okay, even though it has that residential component?
Correct.
So any DRRA that would be entered into them, even as, if they're a commercial project, would also, could and would be applied to the residential component?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
You could also fix it, you could say, no more, I mean, we've kind of already said, said that, but you can say it in the agreement too. That there would be no more residential. Um, because there is a carve out for the forty percent if they could get a waiver.
Right.
From the Planning Commission.
Wait, say, they could get a waiver for?
For the fifty percent.
Uh huh.
The, the, the code was changed to require in mixed use fifty percent commercial.
Right.
Okay?
Right.
And then there is a carve out for a forty percent.
Yes, okay, I'm with you.
Um, if they, if they complied with four requirements under the code.
I thought you were referring to something in the decision of the Planning Commission, you're referring to something in the code.
Yes.
Okay, got it.
Okay.
And the, that forty percent would be through the Board of Appeals.
No, it was through the Planning Commission.
I thought it was, was it Planning Commission?
Planning Commission.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, my bad.
And, and just to clarify, so the role of the board um, is not to have a say in the development, okay? It is for, the board's role is to approve the agreement and to determine what exaction the, is appropriate under the circumstances. The same process for development review would continue, must be done. It, the board cannot have, cannot supplant the Planning Commission's role. Um, now, I mean, you would see it, obviously, I mean, there's some case law, uh, what happens when the legislative body gets too involved. Um, and I've got a thirty page opinion here from the Court of Appeals that it ain't good. Um, there's also uh, conversations um, about um, how the process should work, what comes first, the chicken or the egg? Um, and, and the Attorney General's Office has opined that you do not necessarily have to have the planning, uh, concept plan be approved by the Planning Commission at the same time as the DRA. To me, it seems like they should go together, so everyone is on the same page and there's not this mishmash back and forth or confusion. Either between the Planning Commission or the Board of Town Commissioners, that's my thought. Any other questions?
Something I would like clarification on, in the contents of the agreement, it talks about, you know, the permitted use, the intensity and the height. So are those things that can be negotiated? You know, they come to us and say, we want to do five stories, we'll say, we're not gonna do this unless you bring that down?
No, that's incorrect. The section that you're referring to, the contents of the agreement, says this is what the density is approved by the Planning Commission. This is not a design to usurp the code requirements or the Planning Commission's role. It's to say they were approved for X amount of um, units or this is the use on the property, this is the zoning. It's just setting out the facts of the particular property, does that make sense? It's not a good, because they can, if you tried to do that, they would be like, why would I do that? Uh, the Planning Commission gave me, the code requires that, code gives me this, why would I undermine that? Does that make sense?
Right, but I was just thinking, you know, be- because we're giving them the early vesting, there was, there would be some, you know, negotiation there, but it, that's not how it works.
No, it's vesting, they get vesting in exchange for an exaction, that's the transaction. Everything else in the middle is based on the code and whether or not they comply with the comprehensive plan, does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
The, the draft that we had, um, do you have that in front of you?
Yeah, give me one second, let me pull it up. Okay.
So the, the person that would actually, the, or the entity that would actually approve the agreement would be the board?
Correct, we kind of talked about this before, at the very beginning um, of that draft, it says Development Rights and Responsibilities Agreement means an agreement between the Bel Air Board of Town Commissioners and a person having legal or equitable interest in the property to establish conditions under which the development may proceed for a specified time.
Right.
The powers, the board may establish criteria, procedures and requirements for consideration and execution and delegate all our part of the authority. Um, what may, what we may need to do if you do not believe it's clear, because, I mean, of course, I'm looking at it from a lawyer's perspective, right? Not a layperson's perspective. And I read this and I say, the Board of Town Commissioners has to approve the final agreement, that's, that would be my opinion. If you believe that the lo- the script language needs to be a little stronger, a little clearer, I'm happy to make that um, revision. Um, to make it clear that the board is the one that approves the agreement.
Well, what, Liz, what I was going to, if you look at paragraph five, under, under A paragraph five, it says, the town administrator has been granted the authority to enter agreements under this section.
Correct.
And you look at, now, is that to enter agreements, you mean, basically approve a DRRA?
No, it would be, he's gonna negotiate, the plan is to have the town administrator negotiate the exaction with input from the board. You're, you're gonna, there's gonna be, yeah, this middle.
No, I, I'm just talking, that's what I thought the process was.
Correct.
Okay, but when I look at the words, it says in paragraph five, it says, the town administrator enter agreements. When you look at powers, the next section, B one A, it said, Board of Town Commissioners may establish criteria, requirements for consideration and execution of agreements.
Correct.
That seems to be in conflict in my...
Well, he's gonna execute it on behalf of the board, but you, he's not gonna execute a DRA without you guys approving it, are you?
Well, and, and then you go to the next section, it says, the town administrator may execute agreements for real property within the town.
Yes.
It, it just seems like there's a conflict in, in my mind about, when you say execute an agreement, there's three place. Enter an agreement in section A five, execute an agreement in section for the board, and you know, B one A, and then B two, B two A, it says the town administrator can execute agreements, it seems like there's, I, I'm not sure.
Okay.
To me, that seems confusing.
Okay.
As to what, I mean...
Okay, so let me, let me backtrack it, so my vision is that the board is going to approve it and that they would gr- they would authorize the town administrator to execute the agreement. I can make sure that that's clear if you like, is that how you guys are envisioning it? Sorry, I need a little feedback here.
That's what I would envision, is that we would be authorizing and they, you know, rather than the five of us sign or whatever, Eddie signs.
Yeah.
Eddie, right.
Okay, you're good with that?
Eddie will sign, right.
Okay, so I'll clarify that and just make sure it's clear, he executes after you guys approve.
Right, and also that, and, and like you said, that he is authorized, he would be the one negotiating.
Yes.
Okay, which I think that's what you meant in, in A five.
Yeah.
Was to negotiate as opposed to enter a...
Yeah, I can certainly, yeah, I can, yeah, that's fine.
You know what I mean, to me, that was just... There was a lot of execute and enter agreements and, by different parties.
Okay.
Correct, that's really, right.
I could probably take that out entirely.
What's that?
Yeah, A five, the town administrator, well, I gotta declare the public principal. I'll just say town administrator is the public principal, period. And that's it. And then we'll, we'll leave the, negotiate with the applicant for the enhanced public benefit to be provided. Um, I did have, in light of my research with the Attorney General's Office um, opinion, there was an opinion that was issued about how the process is supposed to be, there was a challenge, Anarona County had a question. And they submitted a request for an opinion, the AG's office came back and said that basically it was up to the legislative body to determine whether or not the um, concept plan went through the process along with the DRA. So where I can see this coming out is, let's say, we have a project um, that is obtained approval. I, I can't think of one off the top that would cover, may, maybe Taco Bell, let's talk Taco Bell, everybody loves Taco Bell.
Taco Bell.
Um, let's say Taco Bell um, gets their approval and they want to enter into a DRA with the town. And they've already got this approval, but the, but the legislative, this gets passed. They could come back and say, um, hey, I want to do a DRA, so I get vesting. Um, are you guys okay with that? Or do you believe that everything should march through the system the same way? Like if they get their approval already, they can't come back and ask for a DRA? What's your thoughts?
I'm trying to, well, that was the other thing I wanted to go through is this whole process.
Okay.
The, the procedures in section E.
In E?
In, in section, well, you, you laid out the procedures of how, the steps, the steps involved and what was here and there. I wanted to go through that in detail and get a full understanding of that. And that might...
Yeah, I was just thinking, I mean, if you've already gone through the full process, the only reason to e- enter into a DRA is you're concerned that you're not vested and something might happen in the interim, so you want to lock everything in, right?
And we would get an exaction.
And we would get an exaction.
And now what that does for the developer also is that um, it provides certainty to assist with them obtaining financing.
Right.
Um, the banks really apparently like them.
Yeah, because it's, it's a done deal.
It's a done deal.
If they do that, there can be no changes, there can be changes.
Banks like certainty?
Imagine that.
You're telling me this now for the first time.
I, I know, right?
Yeah, the, also, you might have developers or developments that have a longer horizon that, than two years. And so let's say they think they're gonna go longer, uh, and go four years or five years. And that's something that would be an advantage to them.
But it would also be an advantage to the town too, because again, you have that certainty. Um, and it's gonna take, especially if constructions, if it's a big, big project, it's gonna take a while just to get the pieces in line and get everything done, so. But I'm sorry, Steve, I, I digress, procedures.
No, that's fine, no, that's, that's fine. So how do you see the, the procedures going, I mean?
Okay, so...
The developer comes and petitions the, the town?
They would petition the zoning administrator, which would be Kevin. Um, they would have to file a petition, um, and a report would have to be um, prepared and submitted. Now, understand also, there are filing fees when they petition. Um, I don't know what the filing fees are, but it's for the same, it's a special development under one six five nine four. Um, and you'd have to have a public hearing. Um, so then, kind of like a, a regular submission, so Kevin would produce a staff report um, and provide the Planning Commission with his opinion as to whether or not the, um, because the big question for the Planning Commission on a DRA is whether or not the exaction satisfies, um, is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Um, they have to make that finding a fact. Am I wrong, Kevin?
Yes.
Okay, I am wrong now?
No, yes, yes, you are.
So, Danny?
You are correct.
Go ahead.
But what's submitted to the Planning Commission is what they submit now, they're full plans.
Yeah.
Till you get preliminary approval.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, because you need to do the site plat and all that stuff till you get the final, right?
Correct, and since there's, and this is why it goes back to, you know, okay, I get it, if someone's got approval today, right? Okay, if they wanted to come in for a DRA, I could see them filing a petition and then just going through the process, right? Because they already have their plan in place. But with a brand new submission, again, I'm gonna throw, I don't know, auto spot under the bus, they're coming in next month. So say they wanted a DRA, if they wanted to, and this was a, a record, then they would file the petition at the same time. And the reason why I'm thinking that is because of the fact that the Planning Commission has to make a finding. A, is the exaction that is proposed consistent with the comp plan? And they also have to make a finding on the underlying development, is it consistent with the comp plan? They always have to do that for every case. So it, it seems to me that, let's have it one and done, do it once, don't do it twice, you know what I mean?
Right.
I looked at several other municipalities, you know, the process that they, that, that they follow, I guess. And a lot of them, it would go in front of the, you know, the council or, you know, the commissioners and they would determine whether or not to accept the petition and move forward, you know, and then forward along to the Planning Commission. Do you have any thoughts on that, or we could, you know, decide, this is good for the town, this isn't good for the town?
What municipalities are you talking about?
Uh, several, I, I have a list.
Okay, I am only aware of one, which is Frederick County, and that's the case that I just read. In that case, the plant, they do not have a Planning Commission, they have a Planning Advisory Board. And the Attorney General's opinion said that if you don't have a Planning Commission, then put it before a board that is similar, that has land use experience. At no time did it say, oh, it comes completely before the legislative body. This is the reason why it's a problem, okay? It's because you guys are making a decision. And a developer is gonna come in and they're gonna sweet talk you and they're gonna promise you A and they're gonna promise you B. They might even promise you M and Ms in the back pocket. You don't want that conversation. So it's to keep you insulated from those discussions. Me, Kevin and T- and Eddie have absolutely no dog in the fight, they can't coerce us. We're not gonna make the decision, you guys are. So we're just communicating what they're communicating, does that make sense?
That does, but I, I think, you know, if, if we're not involved when we accept it, then it could go through the whole process of, you know, going through the steps, going to the Planning Commission and then we say, no, no at the end, right?
You're not, no, that's not gonna happen. And the reason why is because unless somebody changes their mind last minute and doesn't tell us, because you're gonna be told everything that's going on the entire step of the way. Does that make sense?
So we could say from the beginning, no, this isn't good, we don't want this, okay?
Correct. Because we're gonna come to you and we're gonna say, hey, this is what we got, this is what they want to do, what's your thoughts? Do you want us to go back? You know, tell us what, you want us to go back with a counteroffer, that's negotiation, does that make sense?
As in the instance of any time that you negotiate on our behalf, um, you know, we're giving you direction.
Absolutely.
In terms of what our, what our terms are, what our red lines are, what, what we have, feel is in the best interest of the town.
Correct.
Okay, so then going through the, the procedures is outlined, you have the public hearing is, you know, the, the public hearing is the public hearing with the Planning Commission, correct?
Yes.
Okay, then this gets, how does this get presented to the board?
So once it gets through the Planning Commission, this is my sort of vision, once it gets through the Planning Commission and the Pla- Planning Commission approves the concept plan and approves um, the exaction um, that is consistent with the comp plan, then the... then the agreement would be put before you, before another public hearing, town hall. I mean, we could talk about it in a work session, obviously. Um, but it would be put before you guys to pass a resolution to instruct the town administrator. It's, it's not an ordinance, it's, would be a resolution to say that you approve of the agreement, the exaction, and you're instructing the town administrator to execute the agreement. And there's some other timeframes after that, has to kind of move pretty quick after that.
So shouldn't something to that effect be in the procedures that, that will be presented to the board? Because right now it doesn't have anything about a board meeting.
I can put something in there, sure.
Okay, that illustrated just, just what you said.
Okay.
Okay.
Are you guys okay with that? That kind of procedure?
Right, I mean, I think it should be, if we're laying out the procedures, then there shouldn't be any doubt as to what the procedures are.
But, I, I mean.
Unlike certainty like banks do.
Yeah.
That's fine, okay.
Okay.
Uh, we'll, we'll make changes and then of course circulate for more comments if you have any, okay? To make sure that we get what you want down.
Okay, and then the other, the other question I had is that, you know, the timeframe of the agreement. It's, it's, we can set that, but what is the five, if it's five years, five years, what has to be done?
Um, dead.
You know what I mean?
Yeah. I would say it probably has to be constructed, William and Kevin.
Right now, yeah.
Yeah.
Because that's, that's, right now it would have to be.
It means you and I.
Well, it, it, it depends on what the exaction is. You know, if it is that, hey, we're gonna buy a piece of property from, and give it to the town for a park, then that's not really construction, that's execution. So we probably need to expand on that.
Okay.
So there are actions about how far the project is in construction and the status of the exaction should be, that, I think, yeah.
Elaborated on.
Elaborated on. What is, what do we mean by five years, whatever that timeframe is, right?
After, I mean.
And that, that could be established in the D R R A.
Yes.
As, you know, once that's done, you can say, this determines the, that the D R A is in compliance. You know, and if five years goes by and nothing happens, then it just terminates.
It, it, yeah, it dies on its own. I mean, into five years, I gotta check the statute. I don't think that was in the Maryland code. I think that was in the Rockville version that we scarfed as an example. Um, but the five years, I mean, basically the, if the agreement dies and they do not have, you, you go back to default. So if the agreement dies, and let's say they haven't done anything. They haven't pulled the permit, they haven't started substantial construction, then the default rule would apply. And at that point, they wouldn't be vested if they don't have those criterias in place or satisfied. Does that make sense? This locks them in where they could get a building permit on, in year three and do the construction and get it all done before year five, and they're, they're golden, they're golden.
Right.
So. Did you have something?
So if they, so if they do extend, like, like you said, they don't do anything in these five years or whatever, then the planning commission approval, project approval is null and void.
Gone, yeah.
Like, right, I mean, that all, everything goes away, the D R A.
Yep.
The, the agreement and the planning commission approval is all gone.
Yep. Okay. And they can extend it, but obviously, I mean, you know, you gotta take that on a case by case basis. And I'm pretty sure the extension, the extension I think has to be approved by the planning commission that it's consistent with the comp plan. And my thought is it needs to come back to you again. Let me put me again there.
Right, who approves the extension?
Yeah. Okay, sorry, did you have something Gavin?
I had a question. If an agreement is breached, do we have any provisions where, I think Gaithersburg, Gaithersburg requires the developer, you gotta pay the, the lawyer fees, all that kind of stuff. Say they, you know, they break some kind, some kind, some part of the agreement.
Mm-hmm.
Um, they're responsible for, you know, paying the municipality.
I don't do an agreement that doesn't require the other side to
Okay.
Pay attorney fees to the town, um, if there's a breach.
Okay.
Yeah, so. And that includes expert witness costs, that includes court costs, everything.
Awesome.
Okay.
Okay, so questions that I had.
Anybody else?
Anybody else?
Any questions for Liz or Steve?
I don't have any questions. I, um, I, I remain skeptical of these. Um, you know, I certainly welcome us entertaining the conversation further, but I just haven't really been sold on, on, on their benefit yet. So that's where I am.
I'm, I'm in between as well. I, I think the legislature is gonna do something this session. It's gonna make most of this not very relevant. But I do understand the idea of like having it as a tool in the toolbox, so I'm interested in continuing the conversation and, you know, seeing where we go.
I mean, I think the only thing that you're really giving up is the ability to pass legislation that would apply to a project that is in, in, in process. That's what you're giving up.
That is correct.
Yeah.
And that can be important, but.
I know, it can go either way, right?
It can go either way.
But you're gonna know what the project is upfront, and you can say, no.
We could say no to the D R R A and they don't get the vesting.
Correct, they don't get the early vesting.
So it's just, right, it's just, they can go through the process and, and we say, no, don't want it. We want, may want to make a change, like, you know, or whatever. We don't want to give up that right.
Yeah, but we can't, you know, compel them or even tip our hat to say, if you make this change and come back, we'll give it to you, right? Because that would then be crossing that.
Wait a minute, say that again.
Because what, what Steve is saying is, yes, we can say no to the D R R A, but we can't say, if you come back in this posture, we will give it to you.
Oh, you mean as far as the plan is concerned? Yeah, no.
Right.
Because the question is, is what would the planning commission, you know, say about it? You know, so now, the only part that I could see maybe kind of coming before you is if the exaction is located on the subject property. So let's say, this isn't on the table, I'm just hypotheticating. So if Chris Mudd is watching this, hopefully he doesn't think I, I'm stepping over bounds. Let's say Hartford Mall decides to carve out a piece of property at the corner of Tollgate Road and Bolton Street and says, we're gonna make this a playground for the kids and dedicated to the town of Bel Air. That has to show up on the plan. Um, you know, that's not, they're not required to do that. Um, but that is something that would show up on the plan. And you say, you know, yeah, I like it. No, I don't, I think it needs to be bigger, you know, whatever feedback that you could, you know, provide on that particular issue. Um, but you couldn't say, you know, I mean, again, you can say no to D R R As, but you cannot say, I do not plan like this plan because I have apartments on it. If they're entitled to put apartments on there and the code allows it, then that's for the planning commission to make the determination as to whether it's consistent with the comp plan.
But of course, yes, but we could still vote no on a.
D R R A, yeah, you could.
We just, we just couldn't tell them, if you come back without apartments, we'll give it to you. We can just say, nope, sorry, we're not interested in engaging in this process with you.
Yeah, we could do that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because it's, it's a political decision.
Yeah.
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 But we can come back with them about our views about an exaction.
Absolutely.
Sure.
We can say, no, it's not big enough, or it's too, you know, or it's too big, or whatever, you know. We can come back and say, we'll do it if you do this, in the exaction.
Correct, and I mean, my, my thought process is when they file the petition, they need to identify the exaction. I'm not opening the door, let them, let them do it. Let them be the first to put the offer on the table, and we'll come back and say, this is what we got, you know, what do you want us to do? And then go from there, so, okay. So do you want us to make the changes and then bring it, send it by email, bring it back to you at the next? I'm not pressing, I just don't want to lose sight of this.
I would make the changes and email them around.
Okay, we'll do. Sounds good. Thank you guys.
Thank you. All right, the favorite part of the evening, staff comments. Eddie? Liz?
I would be remiss if I did not thank Mr. Small for his excellent direct examination on Friday in the case of Town of Bel Air versus one twenty-one South Bond. Uh, case is not done, we come back on January thirtieth. But thank you again Kevin.
Case that keeps on giving.
I'm glad, I'm glad it went well, and I know it's, you know, never a certainty. So, and a good, strong witness is a real help in a case, so. That is, and it's not always easy to be a witness, it's a little nerve wracking sometimes, but. Yeah, that's a long time, that's a long time, so. Congratulations, and now we'll see Kevin Small. Are you gonna like say something about Liz, or like, is that a? Any comments?
No, I have nothing else.
All right. And standing in for Lisa Moody is, no, nothing? Angela?
Just a reminder that this Saturday is Small Business Saturday and to support our local businesses.
I cannot believe that it is, you know, Black Friday. I called it Good Friday the other day because it is good for the businesses, it's the other Friday. Black Friday when everybody will be out. And I, it seems to me that the starting pistol was fired like two weeks ago. Because when I've been out doing errands, people are just like everywhere and seem to have that I need my Christmas shopping done vibe, so hopefully it'll be a big, big Saturday. I'm hoping to get all mine done soon too. All right, Mr. Charlie Dawson. You're good? All right, Chief?
Uh, yes ma'am, I have a couple things, sorry directors. Um, I'd like to bring your attention, just for your awareness, we, myself, Gavin, um, about six other sworn and civilian employees attended a, an event, very heartwarming, inspiring event uh, this past Saturday. It's called the Shine a Light, uh, Overdose Awareness Vigil and Heroes of Hope Award, and it's held at the Mount Zion Church, just outside the town limits. And it's an event that honors the lives of those who lost their lives to overdose. Those that are navigating and the strength of individuals in recovery. And it put a spotlight on, um, one public safety individual who's making a difference in community for those in, um, recovery and those suffering from substance use disorder. So this was actually the inaugural event, which we're quite honored to, um, to receive. And that was for Chip Carter, Mr. Richard Chip Carter, who is our lead executive officer. And again, it's the Heroes of Hope Award and it honors a first responder who demonstrates dedication, compassion, and innovation in addressing substance use and helps in recovery. So you all are familiar, I'm sure, with the lead program, but it started back in the height of the opioid epidemic. Um, actually, we had a program that started before that, uh, so we take it very serious in the town of Bel Air because it is a quality of life issue. Uh, so our program expanded, um, we needed a lead executive officer. And Chip retired in two thousand eleven with thirty-eight years of dedicated service as a sergeant. And he kind of was doing the, the catchphrase terms, which is harm reduction, trauma informed. He was doing it back then, before it was labeled that. Um, and we knew he was the right person for the job, and obviously he made us proud Saturday by getting this award. Um, and he's just, he's our champion in doing a great job at that. And I'd also like to thank, um, the, the sponsors of this program and the ceremony, which is Achieve Behavioral Health, Hartford County Office of Drug Control Policy, which is Mr. Marcus, Marcus Webster, who's the director, and Grief Recovery After a Substance Use Passing in the Acronym GRASP. So they're the ones that made this happen and recognize Chip, we're very proud of him. Thanks Gavin for showing up there. Uh, it was a great, great event and, um, very heartwarming. So that's the first thing. Any questions on that?
Nope, congratulations to Chip and the Bel Air PD.
Very, very neat.
I'm sorry, I couldn't be there, but I was out of town, so I know Gavin was gonna be there to represent us.
He made a reference to that, he said, where was the man? He did, he did not. Um, the next thing I'd like to bring your attention is the, this legislation, this is an issue. Again, another quality of life issue. We've seen a lot of chattering about on social media. We've experienced these kids riding around on these electric bikes all over town recklessly in the middle of the traffic, riding their wheelies, doing all kinds of stupid dumb things. Um, and quite frankly, you know, we're, we're concerned, we don't want to see one of them get hurt. Uh, we don't want to see a pedestrian get hurt because they're driving on sidewalks. Um, and even a motorist, because a motorist can swerve to avoid them and, um, you know, cause a serious accident. So we too, um, we too responded and attended the legislative session for those that are, for our legislative representatives, senators and delegates going down to Annapolis uh, with recommendations to amend and revise the transportation article dealing with bicycle laws and, um, more specifically e-bikes. We brought up some examples of issues that we've dealt with these kids, and I think it, you know, they're familiar with it, but when you get into specifics, especially like, uh, the one incident where we had ten, like, run from us. Um, we had a couple that we detained at the scene. They were very defiant, very uncooperative. Um, and we actually apprehended a couple, about, a couple of them about thirty minutes later over at Greenbrow Shopping Center. Uh, made an arrest, seized their bikes, and found a replica Glock air pistol, uh, airsoft pistol in one of their book bags. So it's, uh, it's kind of, things are escalating and it's time that we kind of do something. And I think, um, we think that it's, um, it, uh, that the answer, the solution to this is kind of amending the law. So you have class one bikes, uh, and they can reach twenty miles per hour with pedal assistance. You have class two bicycles, uh, and here's the thing, they don't, uh, they don't, they don't have pedals and they actually have an accelerator button. So basically it's like a little motorcycle. And you have class three bikes, um, you know, that's, you would think that, you know, class three, I, I would think that class two and class three should be swapped, but it's not. But they also are pedal assisted and they have a maximum speed of up to twenty-eight miles per hour. And they're supposed to be, uh, less than seven hundred fifty watts. And I swear, I think I've seen them going faster than what these speeds are sometimes. And currently, all those classes fall under the definition of a bicycle. So my recommendation, and you'll see on the second page, was for a bicycle, um, you know, I don't know if you want me to read the whole thing, but, um, basically, class one and class three, remove class two from that category. Um, and, uh, continue with the rest of the definition of class two and three. But they must have operational foot pedals and electric motors of less than seven hundred fifty watts. And here's another, a good addition I'd love, love to see, but I don't know if it'll happen. Operators of class one and class three electric bicycles must be at least sixteen years of age to operate on public roadways. Uh, currently, there's no age limit on class one. I was inaccurate with that one statement there. Uh, and again, I'd like to see class two removed totally from that definition. So you go to, uh, electric bicycles and the classes of bicycles. And they have all of those listed in the transportation article. I'd like to see, again, class two removed uh, from, uh, electric bicycles definition. And if they are allowed to stay, uh, remove them or not permit them to operate on public roadways. And, or, you know, if they remove them, categorize them as a low speed vehicle or toy vehicle. And in some instances, you know, again, if they're over seven hundred fifty watts, they could be categorized as a motorcycle, and you'll see that right below there. And I use the, um, the, um, the equation to determine, um, horsepower in there because seven hundred fifty watts, that's about one point three brake horsepower. And I think the definition of motorcycle is about one point five horsepower. So there's a lot of little nuances in there, but, you know, I think you gotta be that specific when you're, when you're, um, trying to give them, uh, direction. And then finally, on the, um, last transportation code, operation of an electric bicycle, let me see, areas where I would like to see class two removed. And go to the next page, a person under the age of sixteen may not operate a class one, class two if allowed to remain, or class three bicycle on a public roadway. And again, they have to have fully operable pedals, class two not permitted. And, um, person under the age of sixteen may ride as a passenger, this is a crazy thing. A person under the age of sixteen may ride as a passenger on a class three electric bicycle. So, um, that's kind of the changes I'd like to see, the revisions I'd like to see. You know, they seem interested, they seem interested, so hopefully they'll, they'll bite on it and, um, and we'll go from there. Another thing, kind of go over some stuff that New Jersey is doing because they've actually had some horrific fatalities with these things. And actually, ma'am, you sent me something from Massachusetts, which I, um, I gave them a packet. They not only got this, but they got a packet with all that information on it so they could look at it. Um, but they actually, it's difficult to differentiate between the different classes of e-bikes. And they want to put tags on them, so that was kind of discussed too at the delegation meeting. Any questions on that?
Chief, one question, well, well, a couple.
Yes, sir.
On page four?
Yeah.
On that paragraph, the very top paragraph, one B. That you used the word public highway and public roadways, are they the same thing?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm thinking highway is something, as opposed to a residential street. A highway is, a residential street is still a highway?
Put that, I, I probably made a mistake and put that in there. It's the same, it's probably, I just put that, I, I probably made a mistake and put that in there, it should be probably public highway, because these are my revision recommendations, I think.
But, so a residential street is not a highway?
Yes.
A roadway, it, yeah, I'd have to look, I'd have to look at the definition.
Semantics here, but I would just, I don't know what the definition of a public highway.
It's public.
Just a public road.
Yes, sir. Even parking lots are public.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Is it? Yes, there, there is difference.
Yeah, I'm thinking highway with lines, yeah, I, you know. Route one's a highway. Okay, Hickory Avenue, not so much. But, I mean, you know, it's a road.
Hickory Avenue is the interstate.
Right, so. Yeah, and, and the, the thing is about, how do you, the, the bikes that are on sale, but that are selling?
Yeah. I know.
Do we, do we know what their specs are, are they, are they like over seven hundred fifty watts, are they over twenty mile an hour?
I think they're fudging, they're, just my personal opinion. And I think you'd have a heck of a time down in Annapolis with the bicycle lobbyists, cause I know they're, they're pretty strong down there from what I understand. So, you might have some trouble with the tagging of the, uh, bikes and, um, trying to regulate the wattage and all that kinda stuff, but.
Yeah, cause there's no way for you to know.
No.
What the wattage is, or, you know.
But what the officers can see, and, you know, against, to, to help them differentiate is, do they have pedals? Cause we're seeing these kids, that they don't even, they don't even have pedals on these things.
Right, they don't have pedals, there are a lot of class twos.
It's a motorcycle, in, in my opinion, so, um. It's a, uh, it's a conundrum right now that we're trying to navigate, and we're trying to do something before the season starts back up again, and hopefully, hopefully down in Annapolis they'll pay attention to it.
Yeah, I support you on it.
Well, you're up in the sticks, you're not, you're not on, they don't have roadways or highways or anything up there, they have dirt roads up there, so.
And is this also considered for, a low, I guess a low speed vehicle might be a scooter?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Cause I noticed on the bicycle, it said, it said, you know, minimum a fourteen inch diameter wheel, but, you know, the scooters don't have, you know, four inch diameter wheels.
They even have a category of a toy, uh, toy, uh, vehicles or whatever, they, but kinda like a toy category, so. I'm tho- I'm hoping they'll, they'll research it and they'll, you know, they'll get back with me and, and, who knows, maybe I'll even head down to Annapolis to help them with this. All right, great. Thanks. Yes, sir.
It will be interesting to see what the, the bike lobby does. Um, it's kind of a complicated problem, because you don't wanna give people who are just using it more for exercise, um, a hard time unnecessarily, but we have this real problem with people who are using them like motorcycles and not obeying any of the rules of the road and endangering cars and, and pedestrians, so that, that's really where it is. I, I, I don't, I all, I don't know enough about the different classes of the bikes. I know a class one, you must pedal, you can't take the pedals off of it because you will not go anywhere. It's like a bike with a little assist, um, for those people, like, I actually own one, who, like, the hills are getting a little steeper and maybe your knees, you know, could use a little help.
And then you get to twenty and it's supposed to shut off.
Yeah, and, and I, I don't, I don't think I've ever been up to twenty miles an hour. And I only go on the residential roads in, in my neighborhood, so we don't, we don't wanna like throw the baby out with the bath water. Um, and then there are those that have a throttle, which to me makes it very much like a motorcycle. Class ones do not have a throttle.
That's the class two.
That's a class two that's got the throttle, do class threes have a throttle, or is it just strictly class threes?
No, ma'am. They're, they're just like the class one, except they can go up to twenty-eight before they shut down, miles per hour. But I know I've seen them go faster, and I've seen kids that look like they're eight years old, that their feet can't even touch the ground and they're flying, I just, it's just an accident waiting to happen and a disaster, and we, we don't need that in the town.
We, we do not.
I'll say, I've interacted with the bicyclist lobby on numerous occasions, um, and, you know, while I sometimes have my differences with them, um, I, I definitely think that their, eh, their, their primary objective here um, is to protect those who are either riding class one or class zero, they're just good old fashioned bicycles. I mean, they're, they're far more concerned from what I've seen with constructing the transatlantic, uh, bike highway, where they want to be able to bike from, you know, Key Biscayne, Florida to, uh, Augusta, Maine, you know, in an unbroken chain, and more power to them for wanting to be able to do that. Um, I would hope that those same folks, um, would not have a problem in, in further regulating class twos, because if I had to imagine, I would imagine that a standard cyclist is probably also endangered, uh, by these class twos. If you've got somebody who's just zipping by them on a souped up vehicle, as opposed to somebody who's just on an old fashioned pedal. Um, that, i- in many instances, is gonna be far more dangerous for a cyclist, uh, an old fashioned cyclist than it is for a car. Um, because that, that class two vehicle can do some real damage to, uh, a standard cyclist if they get into some sort of collision, not to mention the person who's riding on the class two vehicle. So, I, I would hope that this wouldn't attract too mu- too much ire, so long as we're focusing on regulating, uh, the class twos more, and I certainly support this legislation as well, Chief, this is, this is well done.
I support you as well, Chief, um, and I'm somebody who grew up riding bikes all over town, but we didn't have the e-bikes, you know, growing up, but it's gotten completely out of hand, and like you said, I mean, the, the Surrans pretty much are, you know, electric motorcycles. Um, so there's, you, you, I don't think the parents really realize, you know, the risks that the kids are, are in, I think they buy it for them and say, go have fun, kid.
Yep.
But when you're out there driving and the kids, they don't, they blow through stop signs, it gets dark at five o'clock now, so you can't see anybody, so it's, like you said, it's, something terrible is going to happen, and then they're gonna look at us and say, why didn't you do something, so.
Absolutely.
I'm glad to see that we may have some common sense rules applied to these new things that the old rules just really aren't working all that well for, and I, I know this takes up a fair amount of your time, they, a real problem for pedestrians and, and people driving in some of our businesses. I did wanna ask you one cha- question, Chief, which is, we did decide on the third Wednesday, but we didn't pick a time.
Um, eight or eight thirty, it's fine.
Eight, eight it is.
Is early good for you? I mean, I, I'm good.
All right. Email to Kim.
I eat a lot at breakfast, so. I do, actually.
Chief, one, one other question on the legislation, so this is legislation from the state, right?
This is, uh, these are, uh, laws that are al- already enacted, the transportation article, um, in Maryland code.
For, in the Maryland code?
Yes.
Now, we, we don't have the authority to do this within the town, or do we?
Um, we could do it, but here's the thing, it's easier to enforce these laws. That, and that's what we're doing now with like them not wearing bike helmets and not having the regular, um, equipment that they're supposed to have by law. We write them tickets or do juvenile referrals, and that's what's recognized at district court, more so than our civil citations and things like that. But, I mean, we could, we could look at it, but, um, if we have this, you know, that's, right, yeah, we wouldn't need to.
And it's really a problem that's not just ours, it's, it's throughout the state that this is becoming an issue, so.
Right.
Hopefully, somebody at the state will wanna address it.
One, one thing you might wanna look at, it, it just, it, it, and I hate, I don't wanna belabor this, but something that I kinda screwed up on is, they're not allowed on sidewalks. Bikes are not allowed on sidewalks, uh, some reason I thought, some reason I was thinking, um, that the law was changed and they were allowed to ride on bi- uh, sidewalks. That's why I put some of those other laws in there. So, that's something I gotta get out to the officers. We, we, our local legislation did not allow them in, in the business district, but outside the business district, they're not allowed either.
Okay.
But.
Which makes sense, because the law really treats a bicycle like a car, I mean, that's what it's supposed to be.
And then the conundrum, I don't really wanna see them driving, riding on Main Street, I, I just, you know.
I know, it's, it's risky.
Okay.
Commissioner's comments.
I wanted to bring something up, uh, that I had been kicking around for a while, and that I brought up to Mayor Edding. It's something that the state does, it's something that the county council does, um, but to my knowledge, that we have not done, uh, possibly we did in the past and the tradition was lost, but just something that I want to, us to think about, kick around, is beginning meetings, uh, with an invocation or in prayer. Um, you know, this is something that many other municipalities do, um, and I think it's good that as a public deliberative body that we begin with a meditative moment. Um, and, and like I said, it's something that's done in both chambers of the general assembly, the county council does it, and many other municipalities do it. So just something that I wanted to throw out there, to my knowledge, the town of Bel Air hasn't done it, we may have in the past, but it was, it was put aside, but just something that I wanted to bring up.
Any recollection, Eddie, was it done back in your day?
Going back to two thousand six, I don't recall it ever being done, prior to that, I'm not sure.
Okay. All right, something to think about?
Yeah. Give it a thought.
Anything else?
I just wanna say, you know, my onboarding so far, I had to, uh, commend the staff that I've worked with so far, Mr. Krantz, Christine, Angela, I got some emails, just, I'm very impressed, you know, with the organization and how everybody is, you know, kind of on the same page, and, you know, you guys work, you know, three, you're three weeks in advance, you know, so we know well ahead of time when things are going on and, and what's happening, so. I just had to say, I'm very impressed with that. In addition to Small Business Saturday, at five o'clock, the Winter Wonderland, they'll have their opening night, so I'm looking forward to that. We've been working, you know, the past few weekends, ge- getting all the lights up, um, and I just wanted to say happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
All right. Commissioner Chismar? All right, the only thing I wanted to say was, recycling goes out tonight. I'm reminding myself, um, and congratulations to the Bel Air Police Department on their reel on Facebook regarding, uh, Facebook, uh, the retail thefts, um, which was, I thought, I, I really loved it because it was the entire county. Everybody had the same messaging, and, um, I did think that the Bel, Bel Air Police Department was the sharpest, but, but, you know, totally unbiased.
We're thinking, but took a lot of work, we're thinking about putting the bloopers up, so I don't know.
I think the bloopers would be fun, but I.
There's gonna be a lot of bleeping on there.
I did really enjoy it, I thought you guys did a great job, I thought everybody did a great job on it, and, uh, it was really good to see, you know, Team Hartford County, we're all on the same page, so. Um, the other thing that I wanted to mention, um, and I wanna make sure it gets on our list, is the Tree Committee needs a pro- declaration, proclamation, resolution, something for, um, getting Tree City USA, and they need it before the end of the year. So I just wanted, while it was fresh in my mind, to make sure, Mike, that we get that done.
I already drafted a proclamation for Arbor Day.
I think that might be it.
Which is a requirement to get the Tree City designation.
That's it, that's it, it somehow got dropped this year.
That is already in the hands of, I think, your deputy director.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that's all they need is just a proclamation? Okay, great. Just wanna make sure we didn't lose our Tree City USA designation after so many years, uh, over something so small. All right, that was it. Anybody else? All right, in that case, may I have a motion to go into closed session?
Yes, Madam Chair, I move that this portion of the meeting will be closed under the provisions of the Maryland Open Meetings Act. General provisions, Article Three, Section Three, Zero Five B One, the topic of discussion will be to discuss the appointment of officials to the town boards, commissions, and committees. The reason for closed se- session discussion of the above topic will be because public discussion of candidates' names, qualifications, experience, and background could discourage people from volunteering for public service or compromise their privacy rights.
Thank you, Commissioner Taylor, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All right, Mr. Krantz?
The vote to go into closed session, Commissioner Chismar?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner Hanley?
Aye.
And Chair Edding?
Aye.
We are going into closed session.